All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our special council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 25th, 2025. We are live in person here in City Hall and broadcasting remotely over Zoom. We're going to, we are, I believe capped at 9:00 PM tonight, so we'll go ahead and do roll call and we'll move through the agenda. Councilmember Van Orman here. Councilmember Kurtz present. Councilmember Ball here. Mayor Pro Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
And I know Councilmember Dunn said he'd been a little bit late, but just in case, would someone like to make a move to excuse him until he gets here, please?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Dunn.
We have motion in a couple of seconds. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. We'll make note in the, in the record when he arrives. All right. We are up to agenda approval. Mayor Pro Tim.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Ball. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes six zero. All right. We are up to citizen comments. So for those of you in chambers, we have these yellow half sheets. I need to just record this and hit play every meeting over by the door over there. If you'd like to make a comment here in chambers, please fill one of these out and get it to Kelsey at the end of the table. If you're online and would like to make a comment, please send a note to our meeting host in chat and we will get to those after we have our in-person comments. There is a three-minute limit. We just ask that comments remain respectful. There's no back and forth with the council. It is truly your comment period. But if we do have the follow-up, we'll make sure we have your contact information. And please remember when you do introduce yourself to let us know if you are a resident of this, in the city limits of Liberty Lake. So we will start off, I only, I have two. In order of receipt, we have Tom Salberg first.
Good evening, neighbors, staff and electeds. It's encouraging to see the myth of community engagement alive and well here tonight. We're being asked tonight how this new proposal sounds, along with a huge neon sign, currently a violation of our sign code, and a 20 to 30-foot book wall facade that promises an upgraded expanded library, the completion of Town Square, a year-round marketplace and a community center, creating a destination location, more sales revenue and at a low cost to taxpayers. To me, it sounds too good to be true. To even get to a vote, it requires us all to be on the same page. It has been proposed that we, first of all, engage a firm to design the entire concept by April or May, then to immediately sell what was to be the new library building. And then there will be a ballot measure in November for voters to approve and agree to additional funding for an estimated total of, I guess we'll know in May. I have some questions. Will the proposed year-round marketplace be staffed by the city? If so, how many and at what cost? If not, by whom and how much will they pay to lease it? I want to hear how a proposed 11,000-square-foot library improves on the 14,400 square feet that we currently had in the legacy space, which was characterized as, gee, it's too small. How much will an 8,000-square-foot community center cost? And is it big enough to accommodate, say, 400 attendees to the father-daughter dance? The cost or the recommended size for 400 at a dinner dance is 15,600 feet. Square feet. How much will a book wall cost? I love the idea. It looked really nice. The one in Kansas City, Missouri, is actually just an entrance to a parking garage that cost over $50 million to build in 20, in 2004, just for a reconstruction. I'd also like to know, is this really just a bait and switch meant to get some of the city council majority who had delayed and voted down the original library remodel to get re-elected? I do not support the delays this, this, this city council has caused, nor that Jandy, Kyle and staff's work on the renovation of the legacy building and grant funding of, of almost $1 million has been trashed. I look forward to honest answers to all of our questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Lynn Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Lynn Atkins, resident of Liberty Lake. And the plan is proposed by Mayor Pro Tim Cargill, has some very positive aspects to it. The question that arises is, how do you build and present a plan that is, has the best possible chance of being executed and also having success with the voters? So I've, I'm not going to get too much caught up in any of what the details are. I think that that's something for you to work out, but certainly the devil is in the details. But I would ask you to give some serious consideration to what elements you present to the citizens for a vote. Not only what the elements are, but when you present it to the citizens. In the past, other proposals have been presented and failed for multiple reasons. I believe part of the reason for that is presenting too much at one time. Of concern is the need to not overburden the citizens on a bond issue. I'd ask the council to consider creating a phased plan, a plan that will accomplish the objectives. Create a plan for Town Square and then a phased glide path to completion that is spread out potentially over multiple years. Begin with the library, of which a significant portion of the funding you have already awarded. Then the following year, year and a half, or whatever time council deems appropriate, consider adding on the market and using increased tax revenues to fund the addition of the community center. This phased plan executed over multiple years could be part of future city budgets and would also allow for multiple opportunities to seek grants and donations to aid in offsetting the costs to the city. It would also allow time to build the interest and participation of vendors for the marketplace. An improved and expanded library, a public market and a community center is all a very positive vision for the city of Liberty Lake and its future. One that can provide services and amenities that our community is in need of. So to recap, I'm really asking three things that you take into consideration. Create a phased plan executed over multiple years. Don't ask for too much at the same time. And begin with the library, for which you've already set aside a significant portion of, of the funding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. I think I saw another one pop up. So while I'm getting that, just a reminder to anybody online who'd like to make a citizen comment, please send a note to our meeting host in the chat feature. All right. Craig Phobes, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I don't rise to repeat anything that I said in my written comments to you. I just have a couple of supplemental thoughts I've had since I prepared those comments, particularly on the public market building. To paraphrase Mr. Cargill's presentation and description, using the analogy of the Wenatchee building, a large sheet melding building with a concrete floor, overhead lights and voila, marketplace. But it's not quite that simple because there's a need for utilities in there. There's a need for electric, flexible electric hookups for the vendors. If you're getting involved in significant food preparation in there, you need plumbing, sinks and drains. You need a public restroom and presumably the vendors need secure wireless internet for financial transactions. Then I would encourage you to think about doing the buildings, all of the buildings as green as you possibly can. You've got a lot of big roof space. You can load them up with solar panels. Obviously, that adds to the upfront cost, but has payback over the course of the life of the buildings. And in that same vein, trying to be as green as possible, and encourage you to think about, in, again, in the marketplace context, how to avoid garbage, plastic silverware being thrown away, cups, all that kind of stuff. Can you do it in a creative way that you have some shared resources for reusable silverware and plates and whatnot? So as we don't create a new source of significant garbage. That's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online? All right. We can promote her to be able to speak. And Stephanie, if you could please introduce yourself and let us know if you're a resident of the city of Liberty Lake and you have three minutes.
Hi. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Sullivan. I am a citizen of Liberty Lake. First off, I would like to support a lot of the concerns that were voiced by the first speaker in the Gonzaga shirt. Secondly, a question I have is, what is the timeline for the church rent-back agreement on what is currently proposed as the library building? You know, how much time do we have before? Basically, there's a building on city books that's not producing rent of any sort. And I'd also like to express a concern that if this comes into too big of a project with too many extra buildings and features and everything else, I'd be afraid that either it's never going to get built or it's not going to be properly utilized. There's been mentioned for a need for a large space. And I'd wonder how many times a year does the city actually go out and rent a larger venue for an event? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anybody else online? No. Kelsey, do we have the written ones to?
Yeah, we received one written comment from Craig Phobes regarding the Town Square proposal.
Great. Thank you. All right. Let me flip back over here to my other screen here real quick. All right. We are, yes.
I'd like to bring the council's attention. Councilman Dunn has joined the meeting.
I know. Kelsey got that when he walked in. Thank you. Hold on. I'm a... Somehow I missed my list here. All right. So we are moving on now to the city minister report. And just to note that we will have another opportunity for citizen comments, time, time permitting, close to the end of the meeting.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't have a traditional report in the same sense that I do at regular council meetings, but I just wanted to use the time since we are gathered together to let the council know that because of some scheduling issues, we are going to move the workshop where we had planned to discuss the proposed second-hand smoke coordinates from the March 4th agenda to the March 18th agenda, just so that you have that. And we will obviously make that part of our agenda publication for March 18th and then remind those who are scheduled to be in attendance that that schedule has changed. And then also very quickly, just to point out to the council as a reminder and anyone else who may be listening, we do have a lease in effect with Legacy Church, which is set to expire on April 30th of 2025. And that concludes my report.
Okay, great. All right. We will now move into the workshop discussion on the library and community center project development. Mark, are you kicking us off? Can you answer my question real quick?
I have a question too, Graham.
Go ahead.
You mentioned the lease expires in April. Are they moved at that point or they're expressing interest of going months from that point?
We're currently in a renegotiation process with Legacy for, at this point, an undetermined amount of time, but they've indicated a desire to stay beyond the termination of the lease.
Thank you.
Everybody, please remember to lean forward and use your microphones because people online can't hear us. All right, Mark.
So I will kick off by saying that we have a host of city staff members and consulting partners available to answer questions and to help move the conversation along, depending on what pieces of input the council desires to get and, and sort of how the conversation unfolds. Many of those are here in the audience. Some of those are online and can hop in to answer questions, but we did not prepare a presentation to guide the conversation, although, like I said, we're able to jump in and help guide it along as it unfolds. And so with that, I'll turn the floor back over to the mayor.
Okay. So I apologize for missing last week's meeting. Luckily, my mom's on the mend, though, and I'm still in a lot of pain, but I'm glad to be here tonight. I was, I like Ms. Atkins mentioned in her comments, I, I think the proposal that we're looking at tonight has, has a lot of merit. Just from my side of things, I know there's some questions about the public market. Obviously, we're not looking into programming or anything to that detail at this point. But just using, using the PIVS market as, as an example, as I've been talking to people about this for the last couple of years, they run that by, they have a separate 501(c)(3) that runs that and manages it and, and the city really doesn't have a whole lot to do with that. So that would be, you know, if we would move in that direction, not only, obviously, is it a great economic development opportunity for small businesses in Liberty Lake to get started because we have a couple of landlords here that hold the, hold the market on retail space and it's very expensive. So to be able to, to provide a space for new businesses to start out in Liberty Lake and get their business going, I think is, is a great, a great thing for us to do and have somebody else run it. So those are my thoughts as I, as I visit a couple of the, the public markets over the last couple of years. My, my fear through all of this, and this is why we're here tonight, is that we need to find a target and stick it, stick with it. We've got a lot of moving pieces right now. What I would hate to happen is to have a discussion, sell or release the, the Legacy Church building and then have the measure fail and if it put on the ballot and then we're, we're back to square one. I will say that there is an entity who could possibly be interested in a long-term lease for that building for 20 years. No, no dollars have, have been discussed, but there is an entity here in Liberty Lake who's, who's interested. So that's something I would like the council to consider as well, maybe not a sale, but having a stream of revenue from that building since we paid cash for it and as it continues to appreciate, have that revenue to help support any bond payments that might come up. So that was all I, I had to add for tonight. So I will open this up for discussion. Adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. As I've been thinking about this meeting, I've been trying to wrap my head, especially after last week's meeting, around what we're trying to accomplish tonight. And it seems to me that if we, if the clock strikes nine and we don't have a, a good plan to go forward, at least to me, that would be a disappointment. And I would, I would hope that we could come up with something. As I've tried to put this into, into buckets, I've, I've really come down to, to, to three different areas that I think we need to concentrate on tonight. The first is what we're doing with Town Square. And if that is going to be the place that we put an expanded library slash community center. The second is what we're doing with the Legacy Church building. And whether we're going to sell that, whether we're going to rent it out, what have you. And then the third is what we do about City Hall expansion and about having more space for City Hall. I, I don't want to put the cart before the horse here, but I think there's a way to go about accomplishing all three of those goals. And basically hitting all of these birds with, with one stone. If we can come to an agreement tonight on that, my, my presentation that I gave last week was not necessarily to launch a specific plan or say tomorrow morning that we're going to build something and it's going to have a neon sign and it's going to be this and it's going to be that. It was to get us thinking about the possibilities. And I think that coupled with what Mark and the staff gave us last week gives us a couple of those, those possibilities. So I'll just be quiet for now and say that that's kind of what I'm hoping that we get out of tonight is those, is trying to solve those three buckets.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Like to say, since 2008, we've been talking about this. And unfortunately, in 2008, when we went out for a bond, we also went into a recession. The difference between now and 2008, 2017, I think 2018, was the fact that we're coming to the, the community with money. We actually have funds set aside to be able to do this. We know that we need a community center. We've talked about it time and time again. We need something large enough to be able to accommodate both the young and the young at heart. We've got to look after not only our kiddos, but we've got to look after the aging population. I think this is a stab in the good direction. I think that it's doable. And considering we already own the property, we have funds to set aside. And the fact that we have plans from before that we can start with, or at least expand upon and get the community involved. I'll weigh in a little bit later. That's by two cents.
Councilmember Ball.
Okay, well, I too have been thinking about this all week. But I didn't, 2008's a long time ago, but this study that Jandy sent, this needs assessment was done in 2019. And I was like, wow, you know, this is just about the library, folks. This has been kicked around now for what? God, six years?
You have to remember COVID happened, so a lot of things didn't happen in those couple of years.
But it's still, it just seems like it needs to move forward. And it, it also mentions in this on page 32 that Liberty Lake needs a center of the city. And I agree with that. And I agree that all these, your buckets are legitimate. However, I've really thought this through and I don't think it's smart to sell the legacy building. You know, we don't have any debt on it. It's a perfectly fine building. Sure, it needs to be code upgrades, or so the experts have said. If we need to, if we can't move fast enough on something, yes, maybe Legacy could stay in a little bit longer. But after thinking this through and looking at these, the different schematics that we got last week, I, I really think the library still needs to go to the legacy building. It's big enough. It may not be the sexiest building. It's not going to have the bookcase outside, but you know, Mr. Cargill presented, which is really cool. But we can always dress up the facade somehow to make it look a little bit more exciting. And then the conceptual layout, City Hall to Library Building. And then the third one have, you know, retaining this, this building for more city council, for the park, excuse me, for more staff parks. This room being a reservable community room and the council chambers on the other side. That's the plan right now. I think it's the most attractive and to just work on Town Center later. 2008, yeah, there was a recession, but right now, I don't know what's going to happen. This is a volatile time in our country. And there could be a recession. There could be, a lot of things could happen. And I'm not comfortable with trying to put everything on Town Square. And everything too, and I think Mr. Phobes mentioned this in his letter, parking. It's going to be a nightmare. There's nowhere to park. We'd have to have the parking in the middle, as he said, and I think it's just too much. Isn't that 4.2 acres? Yeah, it's not enough room.
Well, that, that's why we have designers. That's, that's why we would have designers look at that and they would come up with the plan for that.
But shockingly, as much as I'd like to have all this stuff, I just don't think it's a good idea right now. So that's where I'm at unless somebody can tell me something else.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you. I was jumping into the middle of this also because I was really looking forward to this meeting tonight and especially, I don't want to go home from this meeting tonight without having something definitive that we're moving ahead on. But I don't want to end this meeting and say, oh, gee, that's a good idea. Let's have another meeting. And then another, another, another meeting. We've beat this thing to death since 2008 on it. I appreciate some of the comments from the citizens who are able to say that I think what has happened in the past is we've brought things to the citizens that were more than one thing to decide on. The pool we got thrown into it in 2008, it was also the size of the building. It was massive compared to what we could actually put there. And I think by that does, it splits the citizens on what they're in favor of. I know in 2016 and all, in 2017, the issue came up with citizens is that people would get up and say, well, I'm in favor of a pool, but I'm not necessarily in favor of a library. Then we had people get up in this room and say, I'm in favor of a library. I'm not necessarily in favor of a pool. That told me right then is that when we give more than a focused decision for the citizens, it just leads to confusion on it. I, I appreciate Councilman Cargill bringing an idea forward for discussion. That's how I looked at that, is discussion. I have been a strong advocate for as long as I can remember being in the city, is it getting something developed at the city center over there.
Do you mind, real quick, can you get a little bit closer to your mic? The panelists are having trouble hearing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is to get that developed. I am not in favor of building a separate building for Farmer's Market. We're in the process now where we have a trailhead, which is interesting. We're in that business. Look at all the time we spent trying to find somebody to fill the restaurant space. We don't do well by being landlords. What was talked about in 2008 and also in 2016 and 17, that if something on the north side of that property wanted to be developed, then make a negotiation with a developer to lease a land to them, will make money off of that, the bill of the lease of the land and somebody can build there on it. Parking was addressed in 2008 and also 2016 with a design. I do believe if we try to build a separate building for Farmer's Market, then we're adding to the parking problems. I do think that's a challenge. For me, my goal has always been what the citizens wanted and have talked about for years. And that's developed city center. And it's always been talked about to do with the library and the community center. On it. There's things that kept us from getting that accomplished. I think we can get that accomplished now because as Councilman Van Orman said, we have money coming into it. Now, the concept of selling the, the church building, that has come about from the separate possibility of bringing assets in to build. So I think that's why we have to keep that in mind. If a long-term lease or something like that could be desired, then I think there's some possibilities there. But it comes down to what are the costs going to be? We know what the rough costs are going to be is to try to put a library slash community center in the church building. But at the same time, we have to do something either here, being able to move some of this facility into the existing library building, which is a $3 million budget. So realize from last Tuesday to this week, our numbers just went up by $3 million. Because if we're going to build a new facility on the six acres or do something with the church building, that means that our present library is vacant. We'd have to do something with that. Concept is, is to extend our council, excuse me, the City Hall over there. That's a logical thing to do. That's a $3 million budget. So we have to take that kind of stuff in consideration. So I think we can make a decision tonight of at least moving forward. I think a decision can be made tonight. Is that are we going to give this to the citizens or not? If we try to get into, what are we going to give to the citizens? Now we're putting the cart in front of the horse. It has come down, are we going to give this to the citizens? Are they going to have the opportunity to make this decision? If that's the case, I think that should be the decision. We have to address that. And then we can address, what are we going to give to them? We have a roadmap ever since 2008 on what has been presented to them. So we could have as many committees as we want. We're still going to be looking at the same things. So I'm encouraged that we're going to get something accomplished tonight. I, I don't want to see a year or two down the road, we don't have a community center tied into the existing library or a new library. It just is not logical for us to do that. Liberty Lake is a city that we, it's a new city. We do not have a downtown area. When people get off the freeway to downtown is Walgreens. That's what When people get off the freeway to downtown is Walgreens. That's what I see. When the six acres was purchased, I can remember the council saying that the concept is that in proximity to downtown, but we have Walgreens. And also this building and the top library ties everything together. By further developing that as soon as we can, it gives, I think, the citizens what we've been trying to do for a long period of time. Now, if it comes down to part of that has to sell existing building to raise the money, then that's an option. But we do have options. But the main option is who's gonna make this decision? Is it the citizens, who I feel should have the right to make this decision, or is it the council? Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I was looking through the. What's the word for it? The study that was done in twenty nineteen. I just wanted to call out a couple of things as I was looking through that just now as people are talking and just trying to think this through because I don't know that I have an opinion and I do too hope that we can come up with a plan together tonight. I think it's pretty ambitious to come up with all the plans in one night. Love the spirit. But one of the things that I did note on page four of the study was that it said that many attendees to the groups and everything that were part of the last process in twenty nineteen. Many attendees cited not supporting previous ballot measures, but suggested that they would support a ballot measure focused on library expansion improvement that did not bring in other elements from the previous ballot measures. So when I think about the ballot measure having failed twice. I don't want us to repeat our mistakes. I don't want us to do that again. I know that there's some excitement about a community center. But that is not actually something that we have studied. We've studied a library. And so we don't have time to study a community center between now and potentially putting something on the ballot, in my opinion. The other piece of it was on page thirty. Where it's, let me get there. It talked about potential capital project funding for a new or expanded library. It said that it would most likely be led by combining private and public funding. So that's one thing that I would like to talk about. What kind of capital funding campaign can we do? We've talked about public and private funding before. There was some work done on that for the, the previous proposal. But I do think that we need to focus on that in addition to the money that the city has already saved. And it said that it would almost certainly require a ballot measure, which would need to be approached carefully, given previous city experiences with somewhat related ballot measures. So again, a warning to us and informing us on maybe some steps that we need to take and, and consider not taking moving forward. So I'm curious about what we could do with a campaign, a capital campaign. Regarding the existing building, the, the legacy building, I would not be in favor of selling the building. It's interesting to hear that there may be a potential tenant. I have questions about whether we would still be required to do the, the upgrades if we were going to rent it because we would still be out the money for that. But I would not be in favor of selling the church until we know what we are, what we are not going to do if we do put this on the ballot. And then if we did end up selling the church at some point down the road and we don't have a plan for the library, I, my recommendation, my perspective would be that we need to donate or reserve any capital that comes from that for future library purchases. So those are just my initial thoughts. Again, I don't have a, I'm curious to hear what other people think. But I just do want us to be cautious that we, we started talking about a library. And I think if we start adding other pieces in, which we also still need to consider. But if we keep adding these pieces in, I do feel like we would be setting ourselves up to repeat the failures of the past.
Thanks. We haven't heard from Councilmembers Dunn or Spencer.
Thanks, Mayor. So regarding that, that question, this potential tenant, would this be a change of use that you're aware of?
Could be. This, this actually literally just came up within the last five days.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's interesting, but you know, to, to Councilmember Kurtz's comments, you know, if, if we're gonna have to put, you know, three, three million or something to bring it up to code, I, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Knowing the entity, they would do everything themselves. It's very specific.
So yeah, that's an interesting idea. I, I think to Councilmember Kennedy's remarks, information that we didn't have last year when we voted on whether to move forward with moving the library to that, that building is the cost to renovate the existing library to allow for city staff to expand over there. So we're, we're talking about like, like Councilmember Kennedy said, an additional three million dollars. So one way or another, we don't have the funds to make that plan happen. We don't really have the funds to make any of the plans happen that we, that were presented last week or, you know, what, what we're talking about tonight. So at the end of the day, I think we have to, as a council, decide, well, what, what's the priority? I, I'm, I'm personally not convinced that, that the library is at the top of the list for Liberty Lake citizens. I could be wrong, but the only way we can find that out for sure is by sending it to a vote. So in our conversation, I think what we really need to drill down is what, what is our priority as a council? What do we want to present to the citizens to vote on and, you know, that's most likely to succeed?
Councilmember Dunn.
I am grateful for the work of the staff in preparing the comprehensive facilities overview that was delivered in the meeting last week. It was as requested by the, the council, I think in November and about in a timeframe. So, you know, to me, that's the material information for consideration in making plans. I reflect on our objective as a council and the subsequent consecutive actions taken in focus of the library. I think this week, Annie, did you ask staff to prepare a summary of expenses related to research on the library?
Yes, and I forgot to talk about them. So yes.
So I personally reviewed that summary of real expenses, less the capital expense of a property acquisition of around a half million dollars. So consecutive requests of staff in action and then real expense to our community in preparation to make a library happen. And so in that regard, I do believe the library is really in principal focus in the nature of our capital objectives. Yes, there are other things that we wish to do and seek to do. Yes, we have a capital facilities plan actually that this group votes on and meticulously reviews, not only during the budget process, but during workshops provided by staff. So, you know, when we talk about what's important facility-wise, we have and we have had many, many times to say what is important to us. And I think we have said in votes specifically, it's the library. So with respect to the staff's overview of the potential projects, I particularly appreciate the gathering of the delivery of the existing, I'll call it legacy building, library conversion, along with the eventual remodel of the vacated library space in support of the potential expansion of city staff. That, that, as I say, a collected action represents a move which we could take and perhaps even consider as a unit. And perhaps even if it was so compelling, present it for a vote. And I think I've heard that repeated for many times around the dais here tonight. If there was to be a decision, a decision which is well-founded, well-researched, documented as sought by this council, that to me would be the one that should be for consideration. Like I say, it's the, the research and the action, the energy that we put to, to put to, put together. So I categorically do not support the sale of the building that we bought on mission. I believe as an asset, it's a very important piece of property for the city. If not within our lifetimes, but then one that would follow. So in action, yeah, I definitely would not support selling that property. But I, I really believe that with the staff summary reporting, I think it was kind of packaged option one, that to me represents the best option move forward. And I'm interested in discussing how, if it were necessary, that should be considered for voter approval.
Who is first?
Who's the mayor? Go ahead.
I just wanted to reference the document that we all received, but that the public probably has not seen. So it was a, I asked for a list of all the hard costs. So the design services from two thousand seven, ballot measures, how much it cost to put on the ballot in two thousand eight, in twenty seventeen and twenty sixteen, the needs assessment, how much that cost, brokerage fees, the Turner Townsend and Hery contract that we've paid for, master planning and then staff support between two thousand and twenty twenty-five. So that is it right there. And the total minus the property acquisition that we've spent and we don't have a product for, I guess, in my mind yet, is five hundred and fifty-seven thousand plus. So that was one of the, the things that I wanted to point out because I feel like if we've spent over a half a million dollars and we don't have something to show for it, we really do need to make a decision. We either need to stop talking about the library or we need to build a library in my mind.
So Councilmember Kurtz, you're spot on. I just want to point out for everyone, the document you received did not include a line item that this version includes, which is the OAC report that itemized what would have to be done for the legacy building. So it inched up that bottom line cost by a couple of grand, but it's still in the half million dollar range.
Is that it? We had Mayor Proton and then we'll come to Councilmember Van Orman.
Thanks, Mayor. So a couple of things. Again, I think it's important to, to make sure we're putting these in in categories here. Otherwise, we can, we run the risk of really getting lost in this conversation. So I want to talk first about the, the legacy church building. We've got, it seems to me, three different options with that building. One is that we turn it into a city space or a city staff space. We saw the design for that or the preliminary, what it would cost for that last week, and it was five million to do that. We asked the, the folks at Turner Townsend, what amount of that five million was to bring it up to code, and they said three million. So that's sixty percent of the cost. I hope that there is no one around this dais who believes that it's a good investment to spend sixty percent of a project just to bring something up to code.
I need to address that when, when you're done, but I need to address that.
Go ahead.
So this has come up now a handful of times tonight and in previous meetings. The, and if Lisa's on, Lisa can help support this. The, the documented cost that is code-related is not to bring the facility up to code. There, there is no code issue at the facility. The, the code elements that would be included in that cost would be included whether we're renovating a facility or bringing something from the ground up. Because codes have to, building codes have to be complied with. And so as building codes have changed over time, when you change a use in an existing facility, code compliance is part of what you design for and construct for. The same would be true if we built from the dirt up in a new facility. We would have to design the new facility with those code elements in mind. So there is no code issue with the current legacy building. The elements of cost associated with the code pieces are simply to make sure that the design and construction of whatever use goes into that facility meets current code. They would have to be done regardless.
If we had a brand new building, we would not be spending three million to, for the code requirements. We would be, we would, it would be part of the overall project.
That's correct, but it would have to meet current code.
Yeah, I, I totally get that. What I'm saying is if we change the use of that building, if we change the use of the legacy building, we have to spend the money to bring it up to code for that specific use. Well, so we don't have, you're right. We don't have to do anything with it right now. And if we had another church come in or if Legacy Church signs a twenty-year lease or whatever, yeah, then it's totally fine. But if we change the use of the building, then we have to spend sixty percent to, for the code requirements to do that.
I, I would phrase it differently. We're, we're not bringing the facility up to code. We're designing it for a use and part of that use requires certain things that we would have to design and construct to, and, and those all have to comply with the building code.
Okay, so back to what I was mentioning. So having that, having said that, sixty percent of that cost for the city space would be what we just discussed with Mark. If we did it with the library space, the library space was five point seven on that building, it'd be about fifty-three percent of the cost. So I just, I think it's important to point that out. To me, the, the, the third option on that, of course, is to do the extension of a lease with another, with another tenant. But as Councilmember Kennedy says, we're not very good at the leasing business. And I don't think any of us really bought the building with the intent, the intent that we were going to be leasing it out to a company, a church, whatever. So I'm not really sure that that's, I know that that's an option, but I'm not really sure that that's a good option. As far as churning that, the building into the, the legacy building into the library, on day, the, the analysis that we got shows that on day one, that would be too small. The analysis showed that they wanted, or that the, the city requirement or the, excuse me, the city needs from that particular report was fifteen nine? Sixteen?
That was part of the discussion when we, when we were looking at buying building. Jenny, would you, would, do you, could you come up and just address that real quick with regards to the size? While we're looking for it.
So the community assessment showed that the facility should be in the range of sixteen thousand to nineteen thousand square feet for the population. So that was a discussion when we bought the legacy church that it is fifteen hundred square feet smaller. That is a fair point. I would say that I am confident in the design that we have developed for a legacy church and that it does meet all of our current needs. It meets our meeting space needs. It meets our study space needs. It meets our collection needs and it meets our staffing needs.
So thanks, Jenny. So here, here's the issue that I have with that. Yes, it may meet our needs now. But this was specifically for build-out. And I have a real problem seeing how it can meet our needs once the city is completely built out. Because we would be, again, on day one, according to the, the announced, the analysis that's here, we'd be undersized. I have no question that would probably meet our needs now, and it sure looks a heck of a lot better than the ninety-five hundred that we're stuck in currently. But fourteen doesn't seem to be enough if we're going to say that this is kind of our roadmap that we're looking for. I think it's also important to, to Councilmember Kurtz's point. You know, this, part of this report specifically talks about the need for meeting rooms and community space. And one thing I just want to read from the report on page. Let's see, it looks like page, it's not gonna give me a page, but it's about halfway, page eight, excuse me. Public, page eight. Public libraries, it's the last bullet point. Public libraries are seen more and more as community gathering spaces and the hubs of their communities, particularly in communities like Liberty Lake without other outlets that can also serve this role. So when I read that, I think I go back to the concept that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, which is a library slash community center space that can easily be flexed, a flex space that can be flexed to serve both purposes. So we still have the library portion, but also the community center portion can be these meeting spaces. If you look at the, if you look at that design where, that we got last week and we've seen before where the library relocates to the legacy church building. If you zoom in on that and, and look at it, there are not a lot of community spaces in that particular design. There are a couple, but there are not a lot. And so that gives me pause about whether, in addition to the size question, about whether the legacy church building can really meet those needs. And if, you know, I'll just say something really quick about the, about the town square issue. If we're not going to do anything with it, fine, but why are we holding on to it? Why are we just continuing to go through this process of having a dirt patch in the middle of the city? I, you know, I, I would totally be in favor of us deciding, okay, we're not going to do anything with town square. Let's sell it. Let's get rid of it. We'll put those assets into something else. An upgraded City Hall, an upgraded library, what have you. But we seem to be, you know, holding on to town square with a stranglehold, not wanting to let it go, but yet not willing to do anything with town square in the process. So those are my comments.
I had Councilmember Van Orman next, then back to Councilmember Kurtz and then Councilmember Ball.
Funny that you should mention that we haven't done anything with that square footage. We have. Funny that you should mention that we haven't done anything with that square footage. We have, we actually did phase two. That's where you got Town Square Park. You also have all the designs for everything else. The other thing is when we had the, Mark, can you put that back up of the costs?
Evan, can you get that back up for us?
The third one down, Town Square Library and Community Center Project Development, various vendors. I believe that that is the construction of the park, that hundred and eighty five thousand.
That is specifically a design work that went in to develop the project that ended up on the twenty sixteen ballot. So the the park itself, the construction cost or the design cost for the park itself is not part of that figure or part of that list, rather.
If I look at all of these, knowing that we're going to, going to need to, as Mark's words were, that we've got five thousand more square feet that we need to accommodate for within the city. We need more space. I am in the camp of while we have the Legacy Church Building and we purchased it at the time, it's still a great investment. We'll get our money back out of it if we need to sell it. But we needed at that time to put art funds in, and this was the way to do it within two years. So our mayor finding that building, that was awesome. That that hit the crux. But I truly believe putting in additional money into that location when we can do much better and give the library what it deserves. And that is an iconic building, something that's going to expand with our community.
Okay, next we head back to Councilmember Kurtz and then Councilmember Ball.
This is really hard because there's like parts and pieces of everything that I have.
I know it's hard.
So I I apologize because it's going to be kind of all out of order. The most recent one, pay for an iconic building. I like that idea. I don't know that this council is going to pay for something that is iconic, given just just with my guess. So so I love the idea, but I think that that's how we ended up with the Legacy Building in the first place was that it was not a huge thing, but it was a small bite, one bite of the elephant at a time, a focused attempt at something. So I think that when I'm going back to Mayor Pro Tem and then Jandy, can you, can I ask her to come back? Can you? I have a question for you about the 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 report that we got because you know it better than I do. Okay.
Yes, there's staff that's here and and in their offices, so if anybody needs to call on any of them, we can.
So I think one of the things that we've heard tonight and then just in general is that the proposed Legacy Building is not big enough based on what's in here, and I've read that as well. But I think that when we, when this was done, we did not have Trailhead. We did not have that community space that we paid for to build. We didn't have that that flex space. So I think my question is within the report. And then with the proposal that Turner Townsend and Herring gave us, what is actually missing? If that question makes sense, is it meeting space that's missing from that design that we just recently got compared to this one? Or is it space for books? Is the meeting space actually something that you feel is missing or that's missing based on data?
So kind of two parts. I feel like from the community at large, we're hearing that they want community gathering spaces. This Turner and Townsend report that we have gave us basically two meeting rooms that are approximately fourteen hundred square feet. So I would say that I feel like that meets the library's needs. We need a large meeting room that we can do storytime, that we can do programs, that we can do coannas. If the community is wanting a larger space than that, I don't think that this meets that need. I hear what you guys are saying with the community center library combo and having a larger flex space. I think that's something that maybe the community as a whole is wanting, and that's something that that community space library combo could give you. What was the second part of your question? Sorry.
I feel like that was it, just if there was something that was glaringly missing from the recommended overall square footage from this proposal to what the most recent design was.
The other thing that I would add is I do feel like this this design, we do need a little bit more space for our collection growth. Currently, we have a population of thirteen thousand. And so our service model for the library is that we provide two books per capita. So meaning it's a population of thirteen thousand, we provide materials for twenty six thousand. We're a little bit above that right now. Our collection is twenty seven hundred, twenty seven thousand five hundred. So if we are looking at a population at build out of twenty one thousand, if we want to continue meeting that need, that level of service, we need a library that can provide materials up to forty two thousand. This gives us about a thirty thirty percent growth, so it is a little bit smaller than that need as well.
Thank you, Jandy. I think too, when we're talking about the community center, I think, and maybe this might be a place to start and check off a box as to a decision point. Are we talking about just space? Or are we talking about a community center where there are staff who put on programs like a senior center where I I think that's what I want to know about. What are we talking about with the community center? Just so we can all get our shared, a shared understanding and know if that is do do we want it or not? Like, I think that that would be one place to start. And then I think one of the second questions where I think we could check yes or no is whether we want to keep the Legacy Building or not.
Okay, Councilmember Ball next.
Well, to echo what she was saying, yeah, I asked that last week, you know, for a definition of a community center. What are we doing there? Who's doing the programs? Is it a? And and if we're looking for meeting rooms, I mean, with this option one that Turner Townsend and Hearing did, it looks like we would gain gain one here in this building. And then we've got the, I mean, isn't that what the Rotary Room was all about at the Trailhead Building? So, yeah, I'm not quite sure what what we want in a community building. We really haven't discussed it much. And as far as Town Square goes, no, I don't want to sell it. I mean, yes, I I've been talking about Town Square since I got on this council. It's to me a blight and it's dusty and ugly in the summer, but I don't think that this community is ready to be overwhelmed with all of these options right now. I think we need to take things one phase at a time. We've been talking about the library for a long time. We can always come back to Town Square. So that's it for now.
Okay, real quick before we get back to you. Councilmember Spencer, then Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you. You know, and I I will point out that from that community assessment, that that minimum square footage at the per capita rate of eighteen thousand, they showed us both ninety percent and and a hundred percent, sixteen thousand two hundred square feet. So that was the minimum at eighteen thousand. We were just told recently, I believe in a report by Lisa, that we could have up to twenty four thousand at max build out. So so to to start below that minimum at eighteen thousand, I I don't think that's, that's what we're targeting. I feel like if if we were to build in the Legacy Church Building, we're going to start too small and then we're going to have to come up with another solution years down the road. I I know the original conversation that we had was that, yes, this building looks like it should work. And I remember Pro Tem full year asking the question like, this is it? Like, if if we move forward with this, we move forward with the the purchase of this building, this is going to need to be it. And and we were assured that it that it would be fine, but I I I think as as we've kind of had different conversations, it appears that maybe this isn't the best best choice. And I think going back to the the comment about having to, you know, do a change of use, that that's problematic. I think when we first looked at that property, it looked like a good option. I don't believe it looks like a good option anymore. And, you know, the the fact is we did have an option, we did have ARPA funds, and there were different ideas being thrown around, in my opinion, at that time, before we were presented with the option to purchase that building, which, again, I felt like was a good, good option at the time. But before that, I I was seeing what was coming up, which was Trailhead. And and my goal in in that case was to put those funds towards Trailhead. It was a project we were already working on. It was a huge investment that we were, that we were making, and we were going to be using funds that could have been used elsewhere in the city to to purchase that that building. So so I don't think, I don't think it is any any longer a good investment. The fact is, though, we should still be able to at least recoup the cost that we got out of it and determine what to do with that next. So as far as, as far as the different options that are being being thrown around, I I would be in favor of either selling that building or taking a closer look at what this this possible long term lease might be. We have, we really haven't had any issues with leasing that building to the church and and bringing in a nominal amount of revenue over the last couple of years since since we've owned it.
Thanks, Councilmember Kennedy, you're next.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned what I possibly might be hearing tonight, that a community center is not that important compared to the library. I would like to bring to everybody's attention that when this assessment was done in two thousand nineteen, the reason why the assessment was asked because a library needed flex space. They needed a community center where they could hold functions. And and Councilman Kurtz asked a good question, and also Councilman Ball, is what is a community center? Is, you know, it's a meeting place? Is it a place for dances and stuff? Not in my mind, it's not. Should it be that large? Should we be able to provide that? No, that's not our responsibility on it. The whole assessment came about is that it wasn't that the library wasn't big enough for a library. It wasn't big enough to support the growth of the library with a community space or meeting space. So when that concept was put together, we had twenty some people on that committee who met time and time again. It was a focus around the extra space that was needed for the growth. Now, this idea of eighteen or nineteen thousand square feet, I want to point out where that came from is that in that meeting, somebody brought up, well, they understood that we needed one square foot per citizen. And build out was going to be seventeen or nineteen thousand square feet, so that's the building that was needed. Well, in reality, going through the assessment, that number is just a number that somebody grabbed just as a discussion number. So the community center, as far as I'm concerned, is absolutely critical on moving forward. The library right now can be sufficient for the size of it, but not effective. Let me, don't twist my words. Don't twist my words, not effective. If it's larger incorporated with a community center, then it will take care of the growth as we move forward. Now, a community center is what it was looked at, is it for staffing? It became critical, is it in that discussion, the assessment also, and even in two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen, when it came back to two thousand seventeen? Should they, should we consider a separate building? And every single time it came back, no, it needs to be incorporated with the library because the benefit is then we don't have to duplicate employees. We can let the library people staff and book a lot of that type of stuff. And why is because it's all related to the library functions that are going on there now. So I'm a little nervous that suddenly I'm hearing, well, the library is the priority by itself, and maybe we'd get along without a community center. That assessment, be very clear about this, you may not want to believe me or not. Assessment was asked because we needed more space, but it wasn't for the library and books. It was for meeting rooms and growth.
Jandy, did you want to comment at all on the ones, one foot, square foot per capita or no?
So I, as Jandy's coming up to the mic, that's a number that is called a level of service number. We, and it's common throughout. We we use the same kind of terminology when we're talking about number of uniformed officers per capita. It's it's a barometer. And then you have to customize based on the needs of the community that you're working with, but that's, that's where those numbers come from.
Jandy's getting a thumbs up here.
Can I just ask, what is the square footage of the Legacy Building?
Fourteen.
Fourteen thousand four hundred square feet.
Fourteen four, thank you.
Okay, real quick, before we get back to Councilmember Kurtz, we hadn't heard from Councilmember Done this round, and then we'll get back to Councilmember Kurtz.
Hey, Annie, no definitively to the sale of the building. And I think the inability of councilmembers necessary to really characterize facilities or programming of a community center is a pretty good definition that there's not a real solid good feel for it. But let me tell you, we have a really wonderful community engagement commission who I think could work with, along with maybe staff direction and some supportive consulting, the real resolution of what that such a thing is. And from that, I think we could really kind of lay out, well, what physically is it? Well, how large is it and other effects? Those kinds of studies, we've already done that for a library. We've not even touched it for this concept of the community center. So that's my thought. Thanks.
Councilmember Kurtz.
So I have a couple of thoughts after listening to everybody and and wanting to throw out a couple of ideas and see if we can maybe try to gather up for a little bit of consensus. It sounds like one of the biggest hesitations about the Legacy Building is that it is not adequate based on this and that it won't meet our needs in the future. So I'm wondering if the council would be amenable to keeping the current building, having the mayor explore whatever this lease option is so we can rule it in or out, but that we do keep the building until we rule in or out whether we need to have it for City Hall or the library. So if we could talk about that and then focus on the library part. I I know I'm going to be at odds with you, Councilmember Kennedy, but I do want to also acknowledge that one of our community members and Ms. Van Orman talked about a phased approach. I think that we have focused in on the library. I think we do need a better definition of what a community center is, what we want it to be. And perhaps that is, I think you said phase two was maybe the library, Wendy, maybe, maybe phase three or phase two, whatever it is, can be looking at a community center. Because to Councilmember Spencer's point, when we're talking about priorities of the city, we do know that the City Hall space currently is too small as well. So I don't want to have us get rid of a building that we could use and would meet our needs at the moment. So the, the, in order, wanting to see if everybody's amenable to keeping the building, exploring the lease option, and just keeping it in case we need to have City Hall there. And then a discussion about focusing on the library with a phased in approach for a potential community center.
I think we have, okay, we have Mayor Pro Tem, then Councilmember Ball, then Councilmember Van Orman.
So a couple of things I think we need to to keep in mind. One, you know, and I'm not going to put word in, words in in Jandy's mouth, but, and I'm not sure that she was intending to say this, but my reaction to what Jandy was just saying earlier about the space they need at build out proves, I believe, that the Legacy Church Building is not large enough for the library. Again, it might be large enough tomorrow, but I I think the worst possible thing we can do is say, okay, let's go forward, let's put the library in the Legacy Church Building. And then two or three years from now, the next council is saying we're out of space. We got to figure out something else. So that's what concerns me about that building. I think the the second thing, you know, I I'm I'm really good, I think, at drawing pictures. So Annie, when you said, I wish I could see what, you know, this would kind of look like, I I drew a picture.
Can we zoom in on?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll leave it available for any public records request that might come in. To me, to me, the the community center building is twofold. It's a longer building that on the one side that's connected to the library has four or five meeting spaces that the library uses for storytime and for the different things. And then on the other side, a side that's basically cordoned off, it's a side that is owned by the city that the city rents out for purposes like Town Hall meetings, the father daughter dance, but it is not open to the public unless the city the father-daughter dance, but it is not open to the public unless the city is running, it is there, opening, it's been rented out or some, something like that. Basically similar to what the um, the Rotary Room is at Trailhead. So I, I would suggest to you, it's a large building that's kind of cut in half. One part is just a big giant open space that can be used for, for big events. The other part is the part that's connected to the library that has all of these different community rooms. Um, now, back to Councilmember Kurtz's question about, you know, whether we can just agree to, to keep the legacy church building. Uh, to me, I think the answer to that question is no, and not because I'm trying to be difficult, but because if we're gonna move forward with a plan at Town Square, let's say for an example, I need to know how much money we have in the bank to do that. And to me, a huge chunk of that puzzle is what we would get from potentially selling the legacy church building. If we don't have that chunk of money along with the four point three we already have in the budget for it, that's like a black hole that gives me pause about whether the Town Square proposal could work as well. So I, I really feel like we have to do these, these things in order to make them happen uh, properly. If we can come upon agreement that a library slash community center is needed, one. And two, if we can come upon agreement that the, the legacy church building just isn't going to meet our needs for the library. We can have a different discussion about whether it would meet our needs for City Hall. Um, and I think we could all make arguments on that, but as far as the library goes, I just, I, I don't see it. And I would hate for us to be back here three or four years from now saying, we're at, we need more space to the library and we don't have it.
We had, who's next? Councilmember Ball was next.
So, okay, so where would you propose, though, that this community center library go, Town Square, correct? Is that what?
Yeah, probably.
Is that what you're thinking? Okay. So then what do we do with this building we're sitting in right now?
Well, this building.
Proposal for that.
Yeah, this building stays, and this building, they do like a half million dollar renovation on this building for more offices. And then the library, our current library building right now, the one next to the police station, becomes the extension of City Hall. When the library moves over to the Town Square model. That would be what my approach would be.
Okay, we had Councilmember Van Orman, then back to Councilmember Kurtz, and then I gotta jump, then I'll put you on, but I want to jump in after Councilmember Kurtz real quick.
I probably am one of the only ones here that remembers, but we missed an opportunity. In two thousand nine, when we went ahead and purchased the building for both public safety and the library, it was a great option at the time because uh, the vote failed because of the recession. But, um, having phase two actually was building the park with the parking. Phase one was a library community center. So, that had all been, you know, talked about the whole entire time, and now we have funding to be able to do it. Um, as far as the building for legacy building, I think we need to know whether it's going to be a yay or nay with the vote before we get rid of the building. Um, that's just me. I, I think that if we have a possibility of renting it out, great. The funding would definitely come in handy to be able to pay down the, whatever it would be that we put on for a vote. But we don't sell the building until the vote's completed.
Councilmember Kurtz.
So I'm wondering if we want to vote on whether we keep the legacy building or not. Cause I think that's been, we've, we've got to do something in order to move forward. Um, I would like to make a motion to keep the legacy building for now.
Hold on a second, hold on. Sorry, my uh, for some reason, I'm not able to uh, have my video, but um, taking action like that's not part of the equation tonight on the special meeting agenda. So if you want to do that, you'll have to do it at the meeting next week.
Okay. Thank you. I was wondering.
I was just gonna speak opposed to the fake motion. And, and the, for a couple of reasons. One, again, I think we need to know what money we have before we can go out to the community and ask them to take out a bond. Um, or whatever we're gonna ask them. Um, if, if, let's just say for the sake of argument that we do, we have the four point two million that we already have in the budget for the library. Let's say for the sake of argument, we get four million from the sale, potential sale of a legacy church building or three point five, but let's just ballpark it and say four, and then we find out that the project cost for something that we're doing at Town Square is fifteen million for the sake of argument, again. I would much rather go out to the public and ask the public for a six million dollar bond or a seven million dollar bond as opposed to a ten million dollar bond, because I think the, the former is going to be more feasible for the public who is going to be voting on this potential issue. And again, I, I appreciate what everyone's saying. I appreciate the mayor uh, po- potentially finding a tenant for that building. But we did not buy that building for the purpose of being a landlord. And so this, this notion that, well, you know, we shouldn't give up any of these buildings. We should just rent them out and become the, this, the city's biggest landlord. We're doing that with the Trailhead Restaurant. Now we'd be doing it again with the legacy church building. I mean, what other buildings are we gonna purchase and decide to rent out? Because we could make money doing that. Let's buy a bunch of buildings and then rent them all out. And then we could bring in some dollars that way. So I would uh, be adamantly opposed to keeping it just because we had someone who would be uh, coming in and potentially uh, providing a, a twenty-year lease for us. Thank you.
Real quick, and then I'm gonna jump in and we'll go to.
So on that same topic, though, at some point, we're gonna have to ask the voters for a bond for City Hall. So I feel like that's one of the long-term pieces of this, is that if it is adequate to meet our needs for City Hall in the next three to five years, and we already have the asset, um, I don't want us to get rid of the asset and then have to build something else from the ground up and then go out to a different vote. So I think that evaluating, we have evaluated that that could meet the needs for City Hall. Um, and so I think that's one of the reasons why I want to keep it. I don't, I don't know that, that, you know, the rental thing, it may not work out. I'm not in the business, you know, wanting us to be in the business of being a landlord either. Um, but if it does he, help pay the bills, um, and everybody's talked about the bottom line, particularly with the Trailhead Restaurant and how much income um, the selected restaurant is gonna make us. Um, perhaps even though we didn't intend to be in the situation, perhaps it would be a benefit to the city. And I, I'm not married to it. I'm just saying that I want to keep the options open for that.
All right, real quick, before um, get back to uh, Councilmember Kennedy. I don't know how many of you guys are familiar with the community center that Millwood Presbyterian Church built in, in Millwood. Um, it was a church, church project. I, the dollar amount at this point, cause I forgot how many years it's been now, is uh, very irrelevant, but I don't, I don't think a community center needs to be that complicated. So if I look at that as an example, they have what really equates to as, as a huge gym slash community room with smaller rooms around it, that of various sizes that community members can, can rent out. And it also, and we had talked in one of the previous um, bond measures, part of the design was commercial kitchen. I don't know if we necessarily need to do that, but it has been an ask um, and an opportunity for people to do classes for our residents. But I don't, the community center, assuming that's the definition we come up with, because I know before I came here, community center to me, if I look at Blue Ash, Ohio, that community center included racquetball, indoor swimming, outdoor swimming. Uh, I mean, everything, you know, um, athletic you could think of. I'm pretty sure looking around this room, that that's not we're talking, what we're talking about for a community center. But what does it need to provide? But I don't think it needs to be a complicated building to fit the need. Um, and you know, uh, you guys have all made really good points. You know, at this point, I'm not married to the library going into legacy church, though I am. Like I said at the beginning of the meeting, I would be afraid to dispose of that building until we know what the direction's going to be. Um, you know, we're from, from the community. Um, so that being said, just, you know, if you guys want to, I can get you a tour if you want to go over to the Millwood building just to see what it's like. Uh, my son does the youth group over there, so I think I can get in.
Is that on Marguerite Avenue?
Yes.
I was just in there today. So that's what you're thinking, yeah.
Well, I mean, I said, I mean, I'm not talking that necessarily that design, but a community center doesn't have to be complicated.
Fancy, but it's, yeah.
So that probably obviously is brings down the price per square foot. Here, there's not a lot of furniture fixtures and equipment in a community center.
It's been designed right here.
Yeah, there we go. All right, Councilmember Kennedy, you're back up.
Uh, thanking Mayor for bringing in some simplicity to that. When we talk about a community center, it is exactly that. It's a small building, relatively small in a way. It's not super elaborate. I grew up in a very small town in Southern Oregon, and we had, each town had their little building. They were called, um, Grange, Grange. They were called the Grange, and it was just a large building that was there. As a matter of fact, in January of this last year, all of us, the four of us here and the mayor traveled down to a small town down here to go through the AWC training. That was a community center that we, we sat in. It's an area that had a kitchen. It was an old building, but it had a large open space where you could put chairs and functions and things like that sort there. That's what I'm envisioning. It doesn't have to be super complicated. Therefore, it doesn't have to be super expensive. Two things I want to point out is the, this concept of the word community center. Where that came from is once again in two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen, seventeen. I keep repeating that because I hope somebody is listening. When it was brought to the people, it wasn't brought to the people, we needed a new library. It was brought to the people, we needed a community center to enhance the library. That's what was brought to the people. When we had the analysis, we paid those people thirty-seven thousand dollars, husband, wife to come in. That was the whole thing they were talking about. The library, you could use more space, but you, what do you need more space for? They didn't say books necessarily. It was the, for functions of which our librarian points out all the time. Our space we have is booked a hundred percent of the time, right? And if we had double that, it would still be booked a hundred percent of the time, because we're successful at what we're doing in this community. So keep in mind, as it goes on to the public, that when I started hearing just library, and maybe we can get by without the community center, uh, it's not gonna fly with me. The other thing I want to be able to point out that Legacy Ridge building at the time, if I was on the council, I would have said, let's buy it. You're dang right. It was a good deal at the time for what I think we needed it for. I think some things have changed because it not only a dollar amount to what we're gonna put into that, but we started realizing, at least me, I started realizing, we're gonna have to put a lot more money into these things, that maybe it took, took us to the point to start going back to consider city center. Because as of November, start to think about this. As of November, no one ever talked about where we're going with this building and what are we gonna do with the library when we move out of it. It was only since November, and it was only since last Tuesday, we found out it's a three million dollar budget. Roughly three million dollars to do something with that building. If we were to build at Legacy Ridge, at Legacy Ridge, have the church building there, we would still have a vacant building where the library is. It's happened to sit vacant for a long period of time. The idea, we're already outgrowing this building substantially. We're gonna want to move ASAP to start doing something with that building. That's a three million dollar figure. So not only we're looking at the cost of building out church building, we're looking at the cost we have to add on of what we're gonna do going from this building over to that one. And any work we have to do to this one. Just keep that in mind.
Okay, we still, but last but not least again, every round, Councilmember Spencer and Todd.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I think regarding uh, the legacy church building, um, I, I don't think that even if for some reason we put together a plan to build a library and a community center at, at Town Square Park, uh, and if we've sold that building, uh, those funds can then be reallocated. And, and what I mean by that is, uh, if, if we own this property here for uh, for City Hall, um, it's my understanding that, that we have the ability to um, increase our footprint here. Um, so we could use some of those funds uh, here to increase our footprint here. Um, as far as uh, whether we should, so, so let's talk about the scenario in which it does pass. I think what we need to do is we have to package the uh, library and community center at Town Square and building out uh, the existing library to accommodate uh, additional staff from City Hall to go there. Um, so I think that needs to be a package deal, uh, in, in my opinion.
Councilmember Dunn.
Um, I think that uh, earlier, what really resonated was, I think, Councilmember Kennedy saying that combined initiatives with more than one objective create confusion and distraction among voters. And I think that also was recapitulated in the library uh, needs analysis. I think you quoted that in. So I'm not in favor of trying to establish a project which accomplishes N number of different objectives for the community.
Okay, there's a tie here. Councilmember Kurtz.
So, cause I made my fake motion earlier and we can't do things tonight. I'm wondering what we're supposed to do if we can't make decisions tonight, even that this was noticed as a meeting. I mean, so I feel like our hands are tied with making any steps forward tonight, which I think is what we're all hoping to accomplish.
Sean.
Mayor, can I, yeah. Annie, I, I didn't mean that, you know, and I apologize for jumping in. I just didn't want to make sure, go through the process with regard to a motion that, that wasn't necessary or couldn't be made given um, the topic. Um, the topic wasn't about purchasing or selling or purchasing property. That's why I made the comment that I made. Um, the, the, the direction or one of the, the documents that was included as part of the meeting was giving direction to staff um, with regard to the scope and schedule and things like that. So you can certainly make motions along those lines. Um, and what you want to do as far as getting direction. I think that was ultimately what many of you said tonight about um, achieving it, you know, by the time nine o'clock rolls around. So you can certainly do that. It was just specific to saying that you want to sell a piece of property in the city. That's it.
Can I uh, add to that? What we were expecting at some point, obviously you have a lot of discussion to undertake between now and closing, but we, what we were expecting at some point was for the council to give staff direction to go develop some kind of project uh, to bring back an initial estimate of what that would look like to develop in time to meet the August fourth deadline to get on the November fourth ballot. So that's what at some point staff is expecting to get tonight.
Councilmember Kurtz, then Councilmember, oh, sorry, didn't mean to skip you, Mayor Pro Tem. You know, wait, okay.
So can we then talk about, um, I feel like I've heard a little bit of consensus around the library not being at the legacy church building, but that it would need to be at Town Square. Is there anybody that is didn't hear that? So if we're trying to give direction, I mean, I think that that would be the direction for staff to bring back a proposal for a library at Town Square.
There any? I don't see any, oh, Councilmember Ball, who's going, but go ahead.
Library at Town Square to include the uh, I forgot what it's called now, the, the meeting space or whatever.
Yeah, or even. Well, this is, we're taking one bite at a time.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think library, um, and if we need to have it be a big library, so it meets the need. Um, but I think if we're talking about one bite at a time, knowing that we have other things down the road we have to pay for, um, I'm not opposed to a community center, but I think that um, the library's been the focus and, and also keeping in mind what people's tolerances are for um, investing and, and paying for things too.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so I, I missed Mayor Pro Tem here on this round.
Just me real quick. Um, two things. One, um, I, I'm not sure if, if Councilmember Kurtz was making a motion or not.
Do we need to make a motion? I, I guess I will if, if that's, we need to be formal.
We can do like a general, I mean, I'm, wasn't hearing, I wasn't hearing anybody say no to, to your proposal of bringing back something with, with regards to the library at Town Square.
Yeah, I didn't hear that either.
So, what I was gonna.
We'll summarize later.
Yeah, so what I was gonna say is, if that was an official proposal, I was gonna amend that to say, I, I, to me, I'd like to see two different concepts here. One is just the library, and then one is the library with the community center. And then we can figure out from there. Okay, you know, it's just gonna be the library or it's gonna be the library plus or, or not. And um, so I, I think that's a good way to go if uh, the council will be amenable to that. I, I do want to just point out that for every domino that we touch, another domino will fall. So it's really important, at least from my perspective, to kind of think through this. And let's say for the sake of argument, again, that we ju, we, the council moves forward, maybe at the next meeting or whenever, to come up with the, with the library slash um, community center, thank you, at Town Square. And we all come around a consensus to that. Then the question to me becomes, okay, what happens or what, how much money do we need to bring the current library, um, building to where we need it to be for City Hall? And then if we move part of City Hall to the library, we've got to spend the five hundred thousand on this, on this city, current city hall. So if you add all those things up, if let's just say, you know, it's fifteen million dollars, give or take for the library slash community center, we saw inside our packets that bringing, are putting City Hall and bringing all the code requirements and everything up and the current library building is about three million. And then this building is about a half million, so we'd be looking at a total of about eighteen point five. So that is why when I think about what we currently have, the four point two, plus what we could potentially have with the Legacy Church Building, which again, ballpark could be another four, three, three or four. So we're up to about seven. So I would feel much more comfortable about taking all those things to voters as a package and saying we need ten million as opposed to we need fourteen and a half million. Did I, hopefully I made sense there. So, but yes, I, I agree completely with the concept of, of having someone, uh, having staff bring back two concepts for us at Town Square, one with library, one with library and community center.
Do we have any, oh, good, councilmember Dunn.
Madam Mayor, I move that the staff prepare for the next meeting, two options, one with just library and one with library plus a community center addition.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Mark had something he wanted to say. So we're not going to be able to bring back concepts for, yeah, for March fourth. What we're going to bring back to you on, potentially on March fourth is a, uh, is a proposal for a work order so that that work can be done. But we need to understand what we're bringing, what, what, what work we're going to be engaged in.
Councilmember Ball.
So where does that leave the rest of Town Square, though? I mean, how, I, I guess I would need to know that too.
So if we're looking at, you know, let, let's say there's, you know, majority consensus on doing something with a year-round public market to complement the farmer's market down the road. Mark and I have talked about this. That would be something we would, we would engage a developer on for a development agreement. Um, and, and work it that way, because that's not something we may necessarily want to undertake hundred percent ourselves. You know, there's a whole, the whole thing about running it and everything. We're taking small chunks right now.
Yeah, I understand that, but is there going to be, um, footprint for it? I mean, how much space?
Well, if you look at it, the, the one acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, we have four point two of those. So the library and community center, if it is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, that only takes up a quarter of that property and it's not going to be that big.
So the, well, would, when you talk about parking, the, the library complex would take up approximately two and a half acres, which would leave two acres on the north, which fronts Appleway for some other use.
Right.
Which could be, you know, phase thirty-two and a half. I mean, whatever phase that we're on right now.
Yep. All right, so wait, okay, councilmember, uh, Kennedy. Sorry, we're still talking, discussing, discussing Dan's motion.
Oh. I need to hold up what I was going to say.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Was there any more discussion about the motion? All right, not hearing.
We're not, oh, yeah, we're not deciding about selling the building.
No, this is strictly to ask staff to bring back the work order to perform the work to get us more, the information we need, you need to make a decision on library versus library slash community center.
At Town Square.
At Town Square, yes. All right, any more discussion on that topic? We're very narrow focused right now. All right, not hearing any. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. We're making progress. All right, councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. When all the dust settles, I want to see a library with a community center. It's all I want. I have very simple pleasures. I want what has been proposed for years and I think we're the closest we could ever get to it. If we move ahead with a library without the community center, I think we've shot ourselves in the foot and we will never, ever see a community center, whatever you want to call it, down the road. So based on that, that all we're putting into now, we've asked staff to do is all valuable information. But the decision has to be made regardless of waiting for that. Are we going to put this to the people or leave it with the council? With that in mind, I make a motion. Motion would be is that we take whatever we come up with and we'll give it to the citizens for a vote to fund it.
Second.
We have a second motion, so a motion and a second.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, Sean, um, you're, there's a question coming your way.
Sean, um, I assume that this is under the umbrella of what was noticed, so we could make this. We can move forward on this piece tonight if we wanted to, right?
I guess, Mike, let me ask clarification as far as your motion. As far as whatever is decided with regard to the library goes for a vote to the public, is that what your motion essentially is?
Correct.
So is that just on the project thumbs up or thumbs down, or is that on a bond thumbs up to thumbs down? I guess I'm looking for a little bit more specific specificity in what you're.
That as we move ahead, we're going to, we're going to do something with the library and the center. That whatever it is, it has, has to go to the public for a vote.
On the, so I'm, I'm back to getting more specific. What exactly is the question you're looking for to go to the public? Whether they want the project or not, and it's that simple, or are they going to approve funding the project? Which question are you asking us?
Question is, statement is, to give the citizens the vote, do they want the library, community center?
Okay, so nothing to do with the bond or funding?
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to get to.
The cost, we can't even get into that now. The location, we can't get into that now. What we can get into is that who we're going to give the decision to. Because once we establish that, everything else has to be done regardless. And now we can focus on exactly what we're going to be giving the public. Whereas now, it's sort of like, well, is it this going to be it? Is this going to be it? We decide we're going to give it to the public, then I think it becomes very simple.
Mark, I know you and I have kind of touched on this before about how, how a question like that, if it's just a thumbs up or thumbs down on the project, not attached to a bond, how does that get worded on a ballot? And is that, is that going to be challenging?
Yeah, and Sean, feel free to help contextualize this. There's, there's something that can be put on the ballot called an advisory vote, which, which is essentially an opinion poll. Um, it would go through the same process as any other type of ballot measure. Uh, it's just not binding.
I agree with that.
All right, we had a couple of questions here, Mayor Pro Tem.
So.
Couple of people over here.
I, I want this to go to a vote. Um, but I feel like I feel like we don't know exactly what we're asking for yet. Um, because if we're, if we're just saying it's going to be advisory, that isn't necessarily what we might need based on whatever we come up with at Town Square. It might be the Town Square concepts going to cost us, you know, five or 10 million in, in bonds, at which point it wouldn't be an advisory vote. We would need a bond vote. Um, so.
If you're going to increase property taxes to support it.
Right, so I, I would like to vote in favor of this, but I'm not really sure we're, we're ready to say whether it's going to be an advisory vote or a bond vote, uh, until we know the cost of the proposal. And then this, the second part of this is, I'm not really sure, you know, advisory votes are better than, than anything. But I mean, it's, it's kind of like going out and saying, hey, do you want a new pony? I mean, everybody's going to say, yeah, sure, I'll take a new pony. Um, so, you know, without knowing exactly what we're asking for, I'm not really sure that I can say yea or nay to a, to a, a vote. I, I do want to see it go to a vote. I just don't know what we're asking for.
Um, I want councilmember Van Orman, then councilmember Kurtz.
Mark, this question would be for you or for Kyle. Now, councilmatically, we can go ahead and do a bond on our own. Or we could go out to the public and ask for a bond that goes on property taxes. What is our limit for councilmatic?
Um, well, our, Kyle, jump in on this. Uh, so we would have to calculate that. Uh, I, I can't answer that sitting here. If, if it gets into the territory where our current, uh, revenue streams cannot cover the debt service payment, there would have to be a general obligation election to levy taxes to support the debt service payment. Some months ago, we brought forward a presentation where our, our total debt limit is some outrageous number. And we're not even talking about that. But in terms of getting a number, uh, that would kick us into that requirement, we would have to calculate that. I don't know that we have that number here. Is that accurate, Kyle?
Yeah, and Mark, so we, we aren't anywhere near that for a councilmatic. Any, any potential outcome of this project could be done with a councilmatic bond.
That's what I thought. Because at this particular point, we've been very, very studious and pay as you go, except for Trailhead. And that's kind of what this council has talked about, is paying as we go. So whatever we do, whichever way we go, it still gets paid off with funds as much as possible. Yeah.
I think I've got councilmember Kurtz, then Mayor Pro Tem.
Um, I just wanted to echo what Mayor Pro Tem said, that I just don't feel like we are, we, I don't think we have the data to make the decision about what we want to do, what kind of, um, thing we'd be asking for on the ballot. We don't also have the cost. Um, so I would like to make a motion, to lay this motion on the table, and Sean, if I'm doing this wrong, um, please advise, um, until we have the appraisals, until we have the results of the work order, and can explore a capital campaign.
So is it easier just to take, take the vote, Sean, and then obviously it'll be farther down the road and this question can come back up? It's not a resolution or, or an ordinance. It can come back and put it in the other meeting. Would that be easier, Sean?
Yeah, but, uh, for, Annie, what you said is appropriate, if you want to do that. But I agree with the mayor, the easier way probably is just to vote to the extent that, um, it wasn't to pass, that's the case. But in the event that it was to pass, then you have a different issue. So, um, I, I guess I, I don't know how everybody's going to vote, but just telling you from the perspective, would it be easier to address it later if it didn't pass? Yes, that would be correct.
No. Hold on, if you need a second to lay one of the table. Well, there's.
The motion.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it would be, yeah. So if you're, if it was, since it was a second and you're, if you're good with that, then we, okay. Any other, so you want to comment on this, on the motion that's on the table?
This is councilmember Kennedy's motion, right? I would like to make a substitute motion or amendment to councilmember Kennedy's motion, and that is, um, that is that if, if the council determines that it will take a tax increase, then we go to a vote. And so that's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second to the amend, second for the amendment?
Second.
You want to make life complicated here, don't you? We have a motion in a second for an amendment, so it's discussed in amendment.
So my, my motion is specifically in reaction to councilmember Van Orman's comment about councilmatic. I think that's the worst possible thing we could do. And the reason for that is because I don't, if, if the city is going to go into debt for this particular project, I think that has to be a decision that the citizens make. And I do not think we should even entertain the idea that it would be councilmatic. So the reason for my, my motion is to kind of piggyback off of what councilmember Kennedy's motion is, is that essentially, I, I think what we're all saying is that if we determine that we're going to go to um, Town Square and build a big project and it's going to cost a lot, then we take it to a vote of the citizens. If we determine that we're not going to do that, then we probably can make the decision right here. I mean, there's, there's really nothing that would stop us from, from making that decision right here to go forward with the, the Legacy Church Building. But if we decide the bigger project, then it goes to a vote.
So any more discussion on the amendment? So I'll go, let me hit councilmember Kennedy first, since it was his original motion. Now I'll go to councilmember Dunn and then Kurtz.
You have to remember who's on second or third anymore.
I'm trying my best.
Thank you. Sean, I'd like to go back to my original motion, okay?
Yes.
I want to make that motion because I thought it was very simple. Obviously, it's not simple, so understand, possibly I'll withdraw that motion.
Well, there's, there's a motion in a second, so you can't withdraw it. So, um, you know, there has to be a vote on it.
Okay.
But you got to vote on Chris's motion first, because I think Jed seconded.
Okay, councilmember Dunn and then councilmember Kurtz.
Uh, I speak in opposition to both the amendment and the motion. It's truly speculative. There is insufficient information. I'm confident that this, um, council will go to a vote on whatever action is material, uh, when we have material information to consider.
Councilmember Kurtz. Um, so just so I'm clear on what I'm voting on, what or when, what would trigger an increase in property tax? Is there a certain dollar amount? Is there, what would, what would that?
I would turn to Kyle to answer that question.
That is purely going to be, uh, council's decision. And so a, what would trigger a property tax increase is if we somehow meet our debt capacity, which would not happen. That would be, we would build a seventy million dollar facility and now all of a sudden we have to jack up tax rates to pay the debt service year over year. We're not in that position right now. So to councilmember Dunn's point, we, I, I think we're too soon i- in this discussion to determine what would and would not create any sort of property tax increase based on councils collective, um, kind of desires going forward.
Just a clarifying question, Kyle. We would later have to vote to increase property taxes. That would be the method?
Uh, so we would take that to, yeah, we would take that to the voters.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem.
So that's, that's kind of, and maybe I didn't phrase it correctly. So, uh, Kyle, jump in here. But that's kind of what I was, I was trying to get at, is that if, if we adopt a plan that requires that, that basically is going to put us in a position where we have to raise property taxes to pay for it, then that would.
Then it has to go to, then it has to go to the voters.
Correct, yes.
So it already does anyway?
If, if it's going to increase property taxes.
Not necessarily. I mean, we could, the council could come in and say, hey, we're gonna, you know, this fifteen million dollar proposal, we're going to take out of all these different funds and we're going to drain the general fund and we're going to drain the trailhead fund and everything. And then it wouldn't. But in, I mean, I, I think, I think we would get to the point where we are going to realize that this is going to take some sort of funding mechanism.
And that's the, that's the, that's the fundamental difference between a councilmatic and a voter approved. Councilmatic is not necessarily going to increase property taxes. Voter approved would.
Okay, so any more questions on the amendment? Okay, councilmember Spencer, then councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify. Um, obviously from a councilmatic standpoint, we can, uh, we don't have to drain all of our piggy banks, so to speak. We can, we can, uh, sign up for that new Porsche and the payment. Right? We can, we can say, yeah, we're going to leave everything where it's at. What, what's our monthly payment, right? Uh, we can certainly do that. Um, I don't think we have enough funds anyway to drain all the piggy banks to, to, to do a project like this anyway. Um, so I, I, I am going to speak in favor of the motion. I, I think ultimately uh, what this is going to work out to, and, and to speak to Mayor Pro Tem's comment, I, I don't think we need, I don't think it's wise to send a, an advisory vote to the citizens asking if, if they want a pony, right? Um, I, I think there needs to be some skin in the game and I think, I think the citizens need to say, yes, this is our top priority and we're willing to pay for this.
Councilmember Ball.
Uh, well, I know we're getting all these properties appraised. I'd like to see the, the appraisal, see the numbers, see what we're dealing with.
Well, right now we're talking about the amendment to the motion. You have to remember.
Well, I know, but I can't, I can't.
Okay, well then you can vote, vote accordingly. So any more discussion on the amendment, which was, you can restate it. I'm not going to try.
I don't even know if I can restate it. Um, that it would come to a public vote, that the, the library project would come to a public vote if the council determines that it needs to raise taxes to pay for it.
That sounds like what you were discussing. All right, so all in favor of that, please say yes. Aye, aye, sorry.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, so Kelsey, you have those?
It was four to three, I believe.
Yes, motion passes four to three. All right, now we're back to voting on the amended original motion.
Basically the same.
Yes, so basically it's the same thing.
Well, to be clear, it actually calls for a, um, advisory ballot vote.
Well, to be clear, it actually calls for a um advisory ballot vote, to be clear.
No, we've amended the original motion to send it to the voters if it requires a um property tax increase.
In addition to the advisory ballot vote?
Didn't sound like it.
I speak clearly, I, I believe that was the motion.
Well, that will, we, we just amended it to be, to not be that.
I'm sorry, could somebody read that motion? That's a little confusing.
Kelsey, are you up up for restating the motion now that it's been amended?
So the original motion um was to move to take whatever we come up with and give it to the citizens for a vote to fund it, which was then amended to give it to the citizens if council determines that it will take a tax increase, require a tax increase.
And as the maker of the original motion, Councilmember Kennedy, does that now sound correct?
Yes.
Good? All right, all in favor of approving, uh, all in favor of approving the amended motion, please say aye. All right, four in favor, those opposed? May three opposed. All right, motion passes four, three. Okay, so it has been determined that if a bond is required that requires property tax increase, it will go to the voters.
Which is stable.
Exactly.
Mayor, can I interject really quickly? I I didn't want to muddy the waters of the motion and the amended motion, but just so that council has a better understanding, uh, the March twenty fifth workshop that we've talked about for several weeks is going to include a finance segment. And in that segment, we are going to bring in finance experts to help go through all of those options. And that wasn't designed specifically for the library community center project. That was a capital programming uh, wide kind of discussion, but it will certainly apply to the motion that you just made. So you will have some more information coming to you uh on March twenty fifth, specifically about what kinds of wha- what what kinds of bonds are available, how you can position finances to pay for them, what requires votes, what doesn't. So all of that will become more clear on March twenty fifth.
Okay, all right. So we have uh an action for the first half. There any more discussion for tonight, I guess, is my question.
And and while we're here, let me ask a question, because I want to make sure, I want to clarify the vote that was taken earlier on the work order. What we're proposing with respect to the work order is we're going to bring you back a work order for you to approve and authorize expenditure for us to go out and develop two concepts. Those concepts will not come back to you on March the fourth. Uh, it will take time to develop them in similar fashion that it took time to develop the two library concepts that we brought back to you in September. Make sure we don't need to do something different with respect to the direction. That's what everybody's expecting on March fourth.
Just to make sure that it it fulfills at least the minimal um standards that were outlined in the study, though. I think that would be my only thing, is that it the library building is as big as it's supposed to be for the twenty six thousand or twenty four thousand, the build out.
Yeah, and there'll be some uh contingencies made for scoping changes as we develop, absolutely. And and I'll qualify what I just said, too. If we can get that done, the cutoff for the force agenda is tomorrow. If we can get that done, uh, it'll be on the fourth. If not, it'll be on the eighteenth.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Spencer.
Can I just make uh one clarify, one, one thing, and that is that for our friends at Turner Townsend, when I think about this, and and maybe the council's thinking about it differently, I'm thinking about, you know, the library in one spot, and then the community center attached to it as opposed to two separate things. Is that accurate? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Sense operational wise.
Jonathan's been scribbling on his napkin all the time.
Okay, all right. So if there's no more dis, oh, sorry, Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I I I think we also need to, uh, because there there was some, some discussion about the dominoes and everything, you know, pieces that will fall into place there. I I think in one of the proposals last week that we were shown, um, in in which the uh city hall, uh at least city staff was going to go and take, take up the portion of the the uh existing library that there was going to be community space and things, and and some sort of expense uh put into this building. I don't know that that would uh be necessary if we, if we do uh explore this option over at Town Square Park. I I think there could be some, some flexibility as far as that existing library space, and perhaps down the road, PD may need some, some room to expand in that particular building. So I I know we've already kind of got that concept, because we didn't explore what the cost would look like over at Town Square Park in our, in the options we were presented last week. So, so I would just say, it it would be interesting to to kind of at least have those pieces kind of roughly, we we have a rough idea if we needed to move a bunch of staff over to that existing space.
Sure, so, yeah, I can, I can kind of go through that real quickly again. Uh, so I know we've mentioned a three million dollar figure to move some of city staff over to the existing library space. We did also have, it it actually was about a little over two million dollars if we were to keep parks here and do a a a renovation on this wing of the building uh for council chamber. So it kind of depends on the council chamber, how much money we would spend in this building. And obviously, that could be feasible, and we could do it in pieces, and you know, we would necessarily have to renovate that entire end for parks if we didn't thought we didn't want to, or didn't have the money. But yeah, that's kind of how we, it was basically about one point five for this part of the building, and about half million for that part of the building. So those could be severed, depending on which option uh is chosen.
Yeah, and if we start with the new building, if we do start with a new building for the library and community center, it gives us more flexibility on being able to move you know, to wait on moving, you know, staff to to the library and things like that, so we can spread the cost out a little bit longer.
Well, just to touch on that, what what is the immediate need of of city staff for additional offices and space?
I mean, I, we talked about a deficit of about four thousand to forty five hundred square feet uh uh last week. Uh, right away, I'd probably say, it's, I mean, I'm, you're kind of getting me off of of sure footing right now, but I would say probably at least probably half of that right now. We're making hiring decisions based on space uh for staff, and I think that's, that's been going on for for a while now, well before I ever arrived. So I think there's an immediate need uh in some cases, probably not the entire four thousand, forty five hundred square feet, but probably a good portion of that, at least a quarter of it, right now.
So, so to dovetail uh on that, I I would say we do have an immediate need for more space for city staff, if they're having to make decisions based on space. If we are going to entertain this project over at Town Square Park, I think it also needs to include what are we going to do to get city staff more space immediately?
We are actually looking at that at Public Works, so that's, that's definitely an option we've already started exploring.
As long as we don't break our own codes.
I I checked with Lisa.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Kurtz.
So just to clarify, so Councilmember Spencer, are you wanting that as part of the work order to sort of explore that with this new update?
I, well, I, if if I'm understanding it correctly, the work's already been done as far as looking at what what can be done over at the existing library space. We were presented with that last week. So I don't know that that needs to be additional information. I I guess what I'm proposing is and I I'm not necessarily making a motion right this moment, but I do think as we move forward, if we say library only or library community center over at Town Square Park, it does need to include additional space as part of the package. Additional space built out, because we'll have space available, but it won't be built out for city staff use.
Once council's in the process of making decisions based on the result of the work order, you will be able to have parallel discussions about the options that B C R A presented in the facility master plan in terms of phasing, and that could be part of that discussion. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why I'm not making a motion right now. I I think we just need to keep that in mind, that there is an actual immediate need that the city staff has that I I believe needs to be built into that package.
Councilor Kurtz. So I'm sorry, I on this for another second, because I totally agree with Councilmember Spencer. I think the variable that's changed between now and then is that we're talking about doing something outside of legacy church. We're talking about doing something totally different. So I want to, I want, I don't want the um Turner Townsend and Hery to be limited um by the options that were presented when there was a different variable that hadn't been introduced yet. So I think if there are some efficiencies that make sense to incorporate into the library design, I think that those are things that need to be considered as well. Um, if there are parts and pieces of city staff that make more sense to be in the library, some office space over there, I think, I I just want to make sure that we don't limit ourselves to something that where the scope was really narrow.
So that's, what I'm hearing is a different scope than what has been discussed up to this point. Um, because we're now talking about like a city hall west wing or something. Um, or or just extra space for for city staff that are not library staff, which is a different scope.
I, but I think your comment was if it's needed, if if it makes sense, right?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like I'm not, I'm not asking for that, but I also don't want to exclude that. We we got into the situation where we had a work order that was a contract earlier this year, where things were taken out of it for there to be consideration of other things. And so I just want to make sure that they have the ability to consider those things.
So what would you consider to be? Are we talking twenty percent of the square footage? Are we talking?
I think you guys are the best ones to 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 answer that.
I, I I would like a little more clarity.
Can I make a quick comment, which I think might actually answer Annie's question here? And that is let's put the legacy church building aside. If we just look at the concepts that that you guys sent us on this building and on the current library building, is that enough space for all of the city needs to fit in there, given the fact that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven hotel locations, or, and we're told those are like the little traveling workshop stations. And then a community flex space that is almost two thousand square feet, it looks like.
It should be about, if it's, uh, it's, it's this, this space, I think it's a little over a thousand square feet. If you zoom in, I think we'll say a thousand and twelve or something.
I'm looking at the the other one.
This one over, yeah, that's, this over here is, yeah, it's, it's roughly that size.
Right, so if we're putting extra meetings or we're building a community center with meeting space, I'm wondering if these need to be reworked for the purposes of, again, just put legacy church aside, for the purposes of the current library building and this building, if we framed it correctly, is that enough space for all city staff?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. That's how it was put together.
Right, so, so then, what I would suggest is that we have those concepts ready to go, and they may need to be tweaked a little bit. And that we don't need to do the extra offices at city hall west wing. Because we are, we're going to have the room here, because we're putting the extra meeting space at city hall west wing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it does. I think um those designs had community space built into them. But if we're talking about a community center, what would we do with that instead? Like, I don't know that we need to build that much community center. So I think
Right, that's, that's accurate. So we could either repurpose that space that's labeled as community space as something else, workspace. I just want to make sure that when we bring a work order back for council, we have it scoped correctly, so that we can get you the answer without then having to go back iteratively to keep adding or revising it. I would prefer not to, unless you tell me, put a city hall component over there, which I didn't hear originally. That's why I said it sounded like a change of scope. I would prefer not to do that for this work order, because that's not what you all discussed. So, so to answer your question, yes, we could accommodate all of the staff needs in the remaining facilities, whether it ex, uh, whether, whether it was within those exact concepts or something like them, yes.
Okay.
All right. Everybody good? All right, we're good. All right, now we're back to citizen comments. So if there's anybody who's left here in chambers who'd like to make an additional comment or a new comment, we have our yellow sheets over by the door, fill one out and get it to Kelsey. If there's anybody online who'd like to make a comment, um, please send a note to our meeting host in chat, and he will get, get um your name to me. And it looks like maybe we have Mr. Brad Hamlet coming, and you can hand that to me later if you'd like.
So I um I want to say I really appreciate the discussion that took place tonight. I I think it was um very um fruitful. Uh, if you remember, I stood before you in November, and I said to you guys, please make a decision and move forward with it, or just put it away. And so I really appreciate what has taken place tonight in um in moving forward with some sort of a plan. And I would like to say a couple of things about the plan. I heard mentioned many times tonight about community. What does that mean to you? What does that mean to you? I would like to suggest to you that we might want to see what it means to our community. Okay, what does a community center mean to our community? No one mentioned the youth in our community when they mentioned community center. And I think that's a really valuable thing to consider. They are the future of our community. And they need to be involved in any planning, I think, involving some sort of a community center. So I would say that. I would also say that after you we, or you are presented with a proposal or two options, I would caution moving forward too rapidly, and in my opinion, uh, November is too soon. I would prefer a well-thought-out plan, a well-designed plan with plenty of community input and have that plan go before the voters with all the education that they need about the plan, all the input that they need about the plan for them to make an uh an informed vote on the plan, because it will be their tax dollars that will make the plan come to fruition. So I'd ask that you really consider that as you go forward, because if we go forward with this, I do not personally want to see another failure. I really want to see this come to fruition, and I think the town center is is a great place to make this all happen. So I would appreciate um you considering my comments going forward, and uh again, thank you for the conversation tonight.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here in chambers, or do we have anybody on the, online? Okay, welcome back, Stephanie.
Can you, okay?
I can, yes.
Okay, so I would like to make two points. When we're talking about needed community space, how often is the rotary room and the community space room at the library utilized?
So this is, this is just, this is comment period. We, we don't go back and forth, but if you provide your contact information in the chat to our meeting host, we can answer your questions.
Okay, I'll do that. And then I would ask, council, consider what is the utilization of our current assets to decide what we need going forward? Second point I would like to make is I I think everyone is really excited about a community center because of what they think a community center is, and I don't think there's consensus. Um, what I think of as a community center is a couple of basketball courts, a locker room, a meeting room, and extensive after-school programs. Which, that does not sound like what you guys are envisioning at all. I don't know what Liberty Lake needs, but I think until it is defined, everyone's going to be for it, and then once it's defined, you're going to lose a lot of support, because everyone has a different vision. And I would, I'm a bit concerned that the community center is getting lumped in with the library, because I do think there is consensus on what we should have as a library, and we can move forward on that. If you throw a community center into it, I think it's going to wind up being another rabbit hole that will be hard to dig our way out of, and we might tank the library in trying to keep them together. That's all I have.
Thank you. Just make sure um we've, we've got your commu- your contact information uh before you leave, okay? Oh, you got, oh, Mark's got it. Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any other comments? Phil Follier, welcome. Phil Folier, welcome.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect, thanks. Thank you. Appreciate everybody's discussion on the topic tonight. Uh, just an observation. Um, regarding the uh library community space combination effort over at uh Town Square. Uh, one, uh, in, an unintended benefit potentially could be. Uh, it also could easily double as a disaster emergency relief staging area. Even though I know we have high schools and middle schools with big auditoriums, but having something under the city's control may be beneficial. So just a added benefit to that concept. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Alright, if there's no others, questions, uh, or comments, we will go ahead and adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for your time.